We hear you.
Reporting started. Let the July 2020 Brookhaven Borough Council Workshop come to order. Please rise for the Fledge of Allegiance. Fledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America.
Face of America, and to the republic for which it stands.
One nation, under God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Liberty and justice.
Jeez. It's all right, let's go right into public, or let me, let me add that video and audio recording this meeting may be uploaded to the Internet. We'll go right into public discussion, anyone for public discussion?
That's all.
Someone's popcorn's ready. Anyone for public discussion? One more try, public discussion going once, going twice? You're gonna have to wait.
Terry, the lines are muted.
I'm trying to unmute them, let me try one more time. It says they're unmuted, but then their, their physical thing is muted.
We haven't used it in months, I bet the batteries, they go all the time. Is the white on, the green on?
All right, one more try, anyone for public discussion? I heard a mute, I heard like a broken up response, one more try. All right, I love Zoom meetings. All right, public discussion's closed, we'll move it to the second session. Mr. Wells with the solicitors' report.
Thank you, Mr. President, and good evening, everyone.
Hey, hold on, I'm gonna have to mute everyone and then unmute you.
Yes.
All right, try unmute yourself, it's not allowing me to do it. Then go ahead, sorry. You're good.
Can everybody hear me?
Yes, sir.
Hey, good evening, everyone. First item on my agenda concerns 3607 Victor Avenue. Again, this is the longstanding property that we've been in court with previously on July 1st. We had filed a petition, basically a complaint in equity and a petition for preliminary injunction. This is obviously a property that has multiple violations of the International Property Maintenance Code. We were before Judge Jack Whalen on July 1st. We had the code enforcement officer testify with regard to this specific violations. The court ordered the property owner to bring the property into compliance within 30 days. And we will be back before Judge Whalen this Thursday, Thursday morning at 11 o'clock to get a status report on her ability to get the property up to code. I have instructed the code enforcement officer to visit the property earlier this week and take some updated photos so that the court has a total and complete picture of the status of that property. So we'll keep Borough Council apprised after Thursday morning's hearing. Second issue concerned Brookhaven Storage. This is, of course, a land development project. Last week, the Borough Planning Commission met and they voted unanimously to recommend conditional approval of the reverse subdivision and land development plan. Accordingly, I have drafted up a resolution for Borough Council's consideration at the meeting next Monday evening, which will be August 3rd. Again, to conditionally approve that plan for reverse subdivision and land development. Borough Council should have a copy of that proposed resolution. There are approximately one dozen conditions attached to that resolution. Third issue concern Carmens. This is a property that was supposed to go to settlement earlier this month. Apparently, there's been some glitches between the court-appointed conservator and the new buyer. Currently, there was some water that was found in the basement, so they're working out a resolution to that issue. In the meantime, the office manager has brought to my attention some of the property maintenance ongoing issues affecting landscaping issues. Apparently, there's a lot of weeds and debris that have recently come to light. So I've spoken with the attorney for the conservator, again, and he's the, they're the institution that has temporary, temporary possession of this property. The attorney's assured me a landscaper will be over there later this week to resolve many of those property maintenance issues. So will hold his feet to the fire on that issue. Thirdly, concern Dunkin' Donuts. Again, this was another minor land development project. Borough Council had provided finalized approval to this land development project back in May. This is the old Wawa store on Edgemont Avenue. Earlier today, I finalized the drafting of a developers' agreement and improvement security agreement, as well as the stormwater management agreement. All those were forwarded to the developer, they have been signed, and the various fees have been paid, approximately $60,000 was tendered to the office manager today for improvement security, solicitors' fees, engineer fees. So I suspect that building permits may issue later this week to the contractor for the Dunkin' Donuts to begin renovations to that project. And I know that has stood out as an eyesore to the community for a period of time as well. Another issue concerning the animal control ordinance, I've worked over the last week or two, I guess, with the ordinance committee and we've made some revisions to that proposed ordinance. And I guess that will be subject to a vote next Monday, August 3rd, for possible publication and advertisement of a change in that proposed ordinance. And again, the vote to actually adopt the ordinance would not take place until the September monthly meeting. Another issue concerned the 29 borough audit, the auditor had recently contacted my office asking for a status on any pending or threatened litigation affecting the borough that had an assessment or a claim in excess of $5,000. I was pleased to report to the auditor that we have no claims, we have no lawsuits affecting the borough that exceed that amount. So that's certainly a compliment to Borough Council. There's a lot of towns in Delaware County that can't say that, that have threatened litigation, that have pending claims and assessments out there that potentially place the taxpayers at risk in financial peril. And obviously, that's not the situation here in Brookhaven Borough. So again, I think that goes to the judicious decisions that have been made by this Borough Council and Borough Councils in the past. Last issue was an Arbor Development potential subdivision. This is something that the Borough Planning Commission will take a look at at the August meeting of the Planning Commission. This is basically a simple subdivision application, I believe, off of Zohar Street, Z-O-A-R Street. But there is an issue about the applicable zoning, whether that's Z1 or, or, or strike that, R1 or R2. And I've given a recommendation to the borough engineer that this application be reviewed utilizing the R1 zoning district. Other than that, Mr. President, I can report general progress and that is the end of my report.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. The mayor is off tonight, so let's go right into the council reports, Mr. Vaskus.
Hi, good evening, everyone. So I don't have a, a large report for this evening. There was one curb issue that we had with the Public Works Department. I'm sorry, it wasn't really the curb, it's more the storm sewer on the 3300 block of Edgemont Ave. It's right by the CVS Pharmacy. I believe we are gonna be the ones that are gonna be responsible for repairing this. Even though PennDOT, you know, probably should be responsible, I think it's gonna wind up falling on us. So we wound up just placing some cones around it and that's pretty much all we wound up doing with that. I don't have a report for Harold at this time and there's no zoning meetings going on. So just a short report today, thank you.
Mr. Katania, can you explain to us why PennDOT has completely dumped the storm sewer inlets along Edgemont Avenue in our lap, or at least that they're trying to, and what we can do about it?
PennDOT is going back to like an, almost an antiquated law, I think it dates back to the 1929 or 1930, something like that, which indicates that boroughs are responsible for the storm drainage on state roads. That interpretation has varied throughout the years that I've been involved. And most recently, within the last, I'd say in the last five years, they've taken an even less hands-on approach to maintenance of storm sewers and basically left it up to the individual towns to, to address the storm sewer on state highways. Like, you know, it makes no sense for us to be, spend our money to go fix the storm drain on Edgemont Avenue or Upland Avenue or any other state highway. We have other problems we gotta deal with, we can't also deal with state highways. The only, the only thing I can, because we've been back and forth with them for, for a bit on the same subject. And the only way I can see possibly fixing this is through a legislation, some type of legislation going through that's going to have PennDOT take responsibility for the state highways that they are responsible for maintaining.
You're telling me we're stuck for the time being?
Yes.
Okay.
Can we ask Leanne to help us? Can we ask her to try to, yes, put out a bill or in legislature to try to resolve this one?
Someone's got some terrible feedback, is there someone else in the council? Two people in the council chamber with devices on?
Yeah, I think so.
You're gonna have, you're gonna have to kill one of them.
Oh, can you hear me now?
I saw, I saw John running out, let him, let him get out of the room, okay, go ahead, Jess.
Okay, can we ask Leanne if she can try to introduce a bill to try to resolve the Edgemont Avenue problem with PennDOT and repairing, you know, under, the underground of the, the state roads? Because really, it really should not be a municipality's responsibility, it is a state road. They're responsible for everything on that road, why?
I'll get ahold of Leanne tomorrow, Jess.
Would you, that would be great, I appreciate that.
I did contact.
Or you did, John, go ahead.
I did contact Leanne's office and I got a response back from there, her assistant, that same thing that Chuck just told you. The 1945 law that over the years has been changed maybe a little bit, 55, there's 1955 revisions in it. But it still comes down to say that the piping, everything under the road is our responsibility. But that's, that's the response I got from Leanne. Now, that was her assistant, so maybe if you want to talk to Leanne directly, I would think.
Yeah, I'll give it, I'll give it a try.
Can we, just a quick question, obviously, we have to fix the road. Can we try to get, recoup that money or can we keep a tally of everything that we're spending to get recouped?
Yeah, we'll, we'll have, we'll have them tag it.
In that discussion with Leanne, keep in mind that the PennDOT policies go across the entire state and there's a great difference between what we have here in an urbanized area versus what may be in some small borough in, you know, Pike County. So those rules apply to everybody and so I'm just thinking in that conversation, that legislation should consider urbanized areas, maybe it's a different animal than rural areas.
Maybe that's the way we can resolve it, by having it differentiated so that urban areas and rural areas are treated differently. Maybe that's the way to get it passed. I know, I guess Terry can talk to Leanne about that.
I'll give Leanne.
Nobody probably thought of that.
Janice, Janice, is Mr. Wilworth's iPad still in the council chamber?
Yes.
It's all.
It's all.
Okay, we're getting, we're still getting, you know what it is? Tell them to kill the borough sound system, please.
That's what it was, yeah.
Not the borough sound system, the council sound system. That's, we're, we're getting some awful feedback, just kill, kill the whole panel. Did any, did anyone else have anything to add?
I, I also wanted to say that I, there's no way possible that we're the only ones going through this.
No, it's probably every municipality in Pennsylvania.
Maybe we reach out to a couple other municipalities and maybe get something drafted together that we can present to the state.
Get a fight going, yep.
It's gotta be. It's not, it's gotta be.
I'm, I'm sorry, what was that?
Association of boroughs.
Okay.
All right, we'll, we'll, we'll get the ball rolling on this tomorrow morning, folks. I'll call Leanne and I'll get an email chain going to keep.
There are a lot of.
On it, all right. Mr. Vaskus, you're completed, right?
Yes, I am.
All right, Ms. Wiki.
The only thing I wanted to, can you hear me? The only thing I wanted to mention tonight is that, for those who don't know, we will be having the regular flu shots in the borough community room, September 24th, 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon. So it's really directed to the seniors because all the medical people I'm talking to are saying, please get them to come in and get their normal flu shots just to protect them with all this other craziness going on. That's all I have tonight.
Thanks, Janice. Mrs. Leslie? Ms. Leslie?
Good evening. I just have two things on my report tonight. One is the PICO debris disposal. We received this to the borough, so I just wanted to put it out there to all the residents. So their first priority in response to any storm is to restore electric service to customers as quickly and safely as possible and to keep the electric facility safe. To achieve these goals, PICO clearance crews have specified duties which differ from customer obligations. PICO's responsibilities, cutting, trimming, or removing trees or branches from our equipment in effort to restore service and ensure future reliability. The customer responsibility, the disposal of branches, logs, and other debris associated with trees damaged by storms, ice, winds, or other natural causes, as well as debris from unscheduled emergency work. Please note, PICO cannot assist customers with the disposal of the tree debris as it would impede our crew's ability to respond in a timely manner to other power outage situations. And it could also create safety concerns. If you need assistance with tree debris removal, you can visit TCIA.org to find a local tree service company that is accredited by the Tree Care Industry Association. There may be a cost associated with that service. So I just wanted to put that out there from PICO. And the only other thing I have tonight is trash and recycling. Please make sure your containers are clearly, clearly marked as recycled with our labels from the borough or our green cans. The trash man will think unmarked containers are regular trash if they're not marked properly. We've had that a couple times where people's recycles were in a regular trash can, it wasn't marked or anything, and they did dump them in the regular trash. So that should be it, that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Mr. Papas.
Thank you, Mr. President. At this time, I don't have a report, but we'll have something on the actual council.
Mr. Heller.
Hey, I just have a few things. The Technology and Communications Committee met in person on Thursday, July 9th, in the community room. Masks were worn and all social guidelines were followed. We discussed Daco Alert and Ecode, and Mrs. Fuchs will be covering Ecode, Ecode during her report. The Police Committee met on Tuesday, July 21st, at 6:00 p.m. via Zoom to discuss personnel issues. The Rec Board met in person on July 23rd at 7:00 p.m. in the council room. Again, masks were worn and all social distancing guidelines were followed. We discussed the summer concerts scheduled for August have been canceled currently. Nothing for September yet because I think we're still seeing what's going on. We also discussed the upcoming, hopefully, the upcoming basketball season. We were given, we received the registration dates and timelines. There was concern from some of the members of the Rec Board that if the Borough Community Center remains closed, but surrounding community centers are open, basketball would absolutely lose their players. So obviously, we don't really know what is going to happen with COVID and it's so fluid. We will be obviously following the guidelines set by the governor. We will be reaching out to those other community centers just to get their thoughts before any decision obviously is made. The Rec Board is going to meet again the end of August, which they typically do not do, but we feel that it's important that we do meet again. And Mrs. Fuchs will be covering the rest of the topics that were discussed at the Rec Board. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you, I just want to interject that, it, to me, it doesn't really matter what Aston or Media or Parkside or Chester does with, with their, with their municipal centers. We are the first to close, we, we were one of the most proactive municipalities in Delaware County and we're not gonna follow the lead of any of the surrounding municipalities. If, if we decide that it's too dangerous to play contact sports or, or have, have large group events in our municipal center, that's our decision, not, not the surrounding towns, but.
And that was obviously discussed and it was really for us just to see and reach out to them to see exactly what they were going to be doing as well. Just, you know, as a conversation, not as that was gonna be our, our decision-making process.
Sure, we, we have way too many senior events that they're, what they're, they're in the, in the highest risk class for COVID. Eight to 10-year-old kids will probably be fine if they get it, but if, if someone in their 70s or 80s gets it, you know, the data says what, what, you know, data shows us what it does to them. So again, that's our decision, not, not a sports league's decision, so. All right, Mrs. Fuchs.
Thank you, Mr. President. The ordinance committee met in the council room July 16th and guidelines were followed. And we had some residents also attend from Cambridge Square. The topic of discussion was the creation of a food truck ordinance. Some residents there were in favor of the food trucks while others were not citing trash concerns along with frequency and the location of the food truck. Mr. Wells has sent me a sample ordinance from another town and I also forwarded that to the ordinance committee. We will work on that and we will keep council updated on our progress. Also, I have two committee members who are willing to take a look at our ordinances. They're actually gonna look at the, the ordinance book and look at the extremely old ordinances to see how we can get them to where they need to be in our society today. When I say old ordinance, we have some from the 60s and 70s that we really need to take a look at and either update or decommission them. Tech Committee news, Hector, Sherry, and I, we have a Zoom meeting with Ecode on Thursday, August 13th, to get an understanding of how the program works and what the end result will look like to anyone searching for a specific ordinance or code online. So we'll keep everyone informed after that Zoom meeting. As Mrs. Heller, Mrs. Heller stated, we did, we were part of the recreational board meeting and Family Day was a topic of discussion and it was agreed by all parties to cancel this year due to COVID concerns. Obviously, social distancing, masks, probably many seniors wouldn't want to attend Family Day out of fear of, you know, they wouldn't want to get sick. So I'm sure that everyone agrees that it is the right thing to do this year to cancel Family Day. And, you know, we're all very, very sad about that, but the health and safety of our residents has to come first. And lastly, community news, just to remind everyone again, the Chip Vaccination Clinic is scheduled for May 18th, 2021. Hopefully, we can still have that in our gym. And that is all my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Fuchs. Mr. Katania?
I have a couple things for, for the meeting. Action, or action items, the annual maintenance contract for the street and sewer maintenance are set to expire in August. They do have a three-month extension in, in the contracts, so I wanted to recommend that council authorize that three-month extension and also authorize advertisement for bids for the new contracts. We had the two storm sewer inlets, one was already mentioned at Edgemont Avenue near Upland Road. We asked for authorization to repair that storm inlet. And also, there's the inlet in the middle of the intersection of Edgemont Avenue and Cambridge, kind of where the fire trucks come out, that was inspected by the Public Works Department and that also needs some repairs. So we asked for authorization to repair that as well, and that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. I've got a couple things, I've got a lot of questions about holding public meetings, the council workshop and the, and the council meetings, and council decided to wait until there's a vaccine available to go back to full public meetings. The issue is that the governor cut the, the maximum amount of participants per room in a, in a public gathering back down to 25. So I'm not saying we have 25 individuals at every council meeting, but the fact that we'd have to sit there and cut people off when we have big events like the million-word readers are swearing in of a, of a police officer, we've, we've had probably 100-plus people in the room, so we don't want to be put in that position. We're doing just fine on Zoom for now. So again, until there's a widespread vaccine that's being distributed and used, we are gonna remain on Zoom for, for all meetings. Rec Board's a little different and the, the committees are a little different. You don't get the, the turnout that you do for the other meetings. So they can meet in social distance and wear masks and all that good stuff and, and be okay. Did you guys mention, Mrs. Heller or Mrs. Fuchs, you did mention Family Day, right? Yeah, okay, I'm sorry, I commented on, I had it down on my notes, I didn't know who was gonna talk about. But that is all I have for now, I'll have a full report at Monday's council meeting. Mr. Leslie? Or Chief Montella, you're back, sorry, sorry Chuck, Chief, you wanna go ahead?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. As far as our, the COVID situation, you guys have got my report. As of the last week, week and a half since I gave you the last report, we did transport two more COVID-positive people. Just, it's just a little increase, it's about the same every week, it hasn't been spiking higher or lower, just, it's low number that we're transporting to the hospital and we're just continuing with gathering up supplies and make sure we're ready in case it comes back in a little stronger. So we've been getting PPE back into the station and you guys are assisting us with the masters, which I appreciate that greatly. We're having a tough time with them N95s. And everything else besides that, I think we're, we're in pretty good shape. So we'll stay up to date on everything and I'll try to keep council abreast on what's going on as far as anything increasing or moving along, getting worse as it progresses. So hopefully, it stays the same, starts to decrease again, so, see how it is.
And I should add that Brookhaven's at 70 in four deaths, so we've, we've been at that for a while, so we're not, we haven't had an uptick here per se. Thank you, Chief, Mr. Leslie.
Couple things here. Miller Pipeline is still trying to upgrade the PICO situation, moving the meters from inside to outside on people's houses, the residential houses. Texas Eastern did several upgrades down on Williamson Avenue. The fire pits, Mrs. Fuchs is working on that, I gave her some of my input. I guess her ordinance committee's still trying to kick that around and see how we can upgrade that ordinance. Elwin at the 3500 block Edgemont Avenue over there where the old credit union was, that's finalized, I believe. Bill from Mr. Katania's office will be issued a C O very shortly. I did receive a couple phone calls on those public clothes bins that are in the shopping centers. They're a mess, I don't know how we can fix that issue, but those clothes seem to pile up. And the other issue was the abandoned cars and the cars for sale in parking lots at that Audi up there. Now they're starting to drop tires and everything off up there. People reached out to me about it, same thing, it was a fire hazard. I'm gonna call Valerie, see what Valerie can do. She's the, she's the person in center up there to try to clean that up, if not. Because it's a mess, I don't know if anybody else has seen it.
On Zoom, me.
That's what's going on.
I noticed, I didn't notice the tires, I noticed the, the vehicles for sale, obviously, they've been like.
Up at the front, they're piling tires up there now, it's just a drop-off site, I guess, so.
Great.
That's the end of my report, I'll get back to you on what I find out about those clothes bins, how we get that taken care of and those cars out of the shopping centers.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
President.
All right, we're going back into public discussion. Is there anyone from public discussion? Anyone remember to unmute yourself?
I have something. This is Mimi.
Hi, Stephanie's peeking in on your camera, Vaughn. Does she want to speak? All right, go ahead, Mimi.
Hold up. Mimi, can you just again just state your name and your address for the meeting news? Thank you.
It's Mimi McGovern, 3774 Susan Lane.
Sorry, I always forget on the Zoom meetings.
I have a couple things. It's one of the, one is I'm new to the ordinance meeting, so I've been working with Donna and the others on the different ordinances, and the one that is coming up that I think is in, Mr. Wells has it, and this is where I have some questions on that, and it's really on the process, and so it was suggested that I ask you at this meeting. So I kind of know that ordinance 775, I believe that's the number, is the ordinance for the animal, and there's 614-1 through 614-25, and we've modified slightly two of them. So the documentation I saw was there's separate documentation showing 614, I think 13 and 14 were modified, and that's what the council needs to approve, and then I think that needs to be published before it gets approved. So my question is, and this is what coming to the ordinance meeting, people have been telling me that it's like a mess. There's so many ordinances that, then there's other ordinances that rescind a piece of the first one. So in order to see really the animal control ordinance in this example, you would have to go to the first one, and correct me if I'm wrong here, go to the first one and then go to the new thing that Mr. Wells is writing up to then say 13 and 14 have been modified to be this, and then you'd have to look at multiple docs to see the real ordinance. Is that true?
Mimi, might I interject for a second? I know you're asking a very specific question, but once we get this Ecode and everything rolling with that, this is going to simplify everything that we have when it comes to zoning, ordinances, and everything else. Everybody will be able to search online. There'll be an online platform that any user can go on, you know, type up, say, you know, garage, and everything associated with garage will come up. So this will also be affiliated with.
Yeah, I understand. That would be a good thing. I have looked at Parkside, and I think Chester Heights, they have Ecode, so I've taken a look at it to see what it looks like, but what, how I understand it is, we need to provide them the information to get into there, so we need to make sure our codes are more simplified to get them in there, to make it, you know, cost-effective as well. So I understand what you're saying, but I think it's still important to understand this in order to make Ecode easier to implement and less expensive. And Donna, correct me if I'm wrong there as well.
No, you are correct, and I'm thinking of some of the older ordinances where it refers to sometimes two or three ordinances within one ordinance. So I totally understand what you're saying, Mimi, and, you know, I also asked Mr. Wells today about ordinances that maybe are not effective now, just based, you know, because they're so old and, you know, some of them talk about forms and this and that, and we don't even have that. So, Mr. Wells, do you want to briefly explain to everyone what you told me earlier regarding the older ordinances and decommissioning them, so to speak?
Sure. Let me start out by just prefacing my remarks, saying Brookhaven is probably one of the few municipalities in Delaware County that is not presently on Ecode, some other electronic form of communication with regard to the codification of ordinances. And I think it would certainly move Borough Council to try to fast-forward this process as soon as possible to see about, obviously, entering into a financial contract or some other electronic format company to get these all ordinances on Ecodes that any citizen, simply by, again, you know, dropping a button, you know, a push button on a computer can simply get access to any information, any particular ordinance, you know, they want. And because we're still sort of, you know, somewhat a little behind the times right now with regard to, we just have hard copies of the ordinance book, and that's the problem, you know, we run into is that, you know, one ordinance sometimes reverts back or incorporates a different ordinance because it's been updated, but many of these ordinances are very lengthy, so it doesn't, from a time perspective, to try to have to, you know, retype the entire ordinance when perhaps only a couple sentences or subparaphrase or particular subsection is being changed, it lends itself to a lot of work. So for a lot of reasons, it makes sense to get to this Ecode sooner rather than later.
I don't think council will have an issue with fast-tracking that.
Yeah.
And we haven't.
The conversations I have, so what we have to do to get it moving, and it sounds like the ordinance committee is going to be busy. Mimi, do you have anything else?
Yeah, so I think I understand from what you said, Mr. Wells, is that because the ordinance that we're looking at, 775, is not online, it's just a paper copy, that when you're updating it, you'd have, if you wanted to make it simpler to be converted to Ecode, you'd have to type the entire ordinance with these two changes, as opposed to just putting in these two changes, and then you would append them to that ordinance. Is that right?
It's a much simplified process, you know, through an Ecode.
I understand all of that about Ecode.
Hold on, this could be a conversation between Mr. Wells and the ordinance committee in emails. We're turning this into an ordinance committee meeting. This is a council workshop. We're going to have to move on. We understand what you say.
If we could have Mr. Wells at a discussion, that would be great. I would love to talk to you about that. I'll range it, Mimi.
We can do that.
If so invited, I would be happy to attend an ordinance committee meeting if so directed by the ordinance committee chair.
Mimi, we do, we do all agree.
Okay, and I think that would be beneficial just to, before we convert to Ecode, it would be more cost-effective.
It's, we have to do it. There's really no questioning it.
I agree. I'll send you an email.
Antiquated cumbersome process, you can imagine. It's ridiculous. We're in the dark ages, but we certainly agree, but we'll get that going. Is there anyone else for public discussion? Remember to unmute yourself, Mr. Murphy?
Yes. I just wanted to know if you had a timeframe.
Name and address, sir. That's the rules.
Oh, I'm sorry. 114 Bradbury Road.
I'm just glad I remembered to ask. Go ahead, sir.
I wanted to know if you had a timeframe on the ordinance or a potential resolution for the food trucks.
That will be at Monday's council meeting, which is a week from tonight.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
We cannot do them during council workshops.
Understood. Thank you.
Resolutions must be adopted at the monthly council meeting, but that will be taken care of on Monday, assuming a positive council vote.
Hoping.
Is there anyone else for public discussion?
If I'm allowed another question, I would like to be on it.
Only for you. Go ahead.
So this is Mimi again. So the question is, I understand with PennDOT and who's responsible for the stormwater drains, one of the things I had asked before is, you know, can we clean the storm on top of the stormwater drains on Edgemont Avenue and Brookhaven Road? So it appears that PennDOT says, and through the 1945 laws, that the borough is responsible. So until, which could take a long, long time, your suggestion of changing state laws is can we clean the stormwater grates, the top of them on Brookhaven Road and Edgemont Avenue and wherever else they're bad? And just for your, I'm sure you've all seen it, they're getting worse and worse and worse.
I would have no objection to public employees going up there and simply cleaning the stormwater drains on Edgemont Avenue.
Sure, as long as there's no safety issue and you have a police officer block them.
That would have to be the issue. We need somebody to block traffic, so.
Yeah, we'd have to have an officer block for them, and I wouldn't imagine it would be a job that would take all that long, but we can definitely discuss it.
But if we go down that path, where we start repairing stormwater inlet drains, now we get into a past-practice situation with, where they say, well, if you've repaired one, you might as well repair the rest of them, so that's.
Let me have my conversation with Leanne, and we'll go from there. Is that it?
That's it, thank you.
Anyone else for public discussion? Vaughn, do you have something? Vaughn, I can't hear you. Mr. Donaway?
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you now.
Okay. Vaughn Donaway, 3713, John Dry.
Go ahead, sir.
Just a couple things. Number one, I'm going to try to assemble my parade committee. We did send out letters, and my understanding is that Linda has actually heard back from some people. I don't know exactly who she's heard from, but we'll let everybody know when that meeting is so that if Donna and Sherry would like to attend, because we want to know where the council sits on this also, but I also am very interested to hear who she's heard back from and what they had to say. So I'm trying to put a meeting together on the 12th, and I'll let you know when I get all the confirmations on that.
Was that the 12th, you said?
Good luck with Leanne. You know, we've been through this before with the sewer work on Edgemont Avenue. Change of state law is going to take a relatively long time to do that. It's not like council, where you can attend a couple months after. If you remember.
Vaughn, Vaughn, Vaughn. Hold on one second. I'm going to have to mute everyone, and you're going to have to unmute yourself. Too much background. All right, go ahead, Vaughn. Unmute yourself, please. Vaughn, unmute yourself. You're still muted. Help him out, Stephanie. Come on. There you go. Sorry, there is multiple conversations going on in the background. Go ahead. We can't hear you again, Vaughn. Now you're good.
Okay.
Go ahead.
The only thing I was going to say is good luck with Leanne. It's going to take a long time to change the state law, and you're going to have more than just Edgemont Avenue. If you remember, we used to have a problem down by the sewer plant where, you know, we're going to have to replace that down there at some point. And if you take a look at that law, they'll actually fix it in townships. They won't do it in boroughs, because if you remember, that, the pipe that runs across that road there.
Yeah, I recall.
Some of it goes into Chester Township, and what they told us when we looked at that a couple years ago, well, we'll fix their side, but we can't fix yours, which never made sense to me. Do you remember? I was fighting that for some time.
Yep, clearly.
Yeah, so I mean, I really hope that, you know, that you can move this along as fast as you think you can, but I think it's going to be a long haul, and that's unfortunate because we don't have that kind of money, which is what we've been saying all along. But good news on the coronavirus. I just heard that they just moved into the third phase of testing, which I think, you know, they were, first they were predicting it was 10 years away, and it looks like that we may be on track faster.
October, possibly October from Moderna. Yep. So somewhere between Family Day and somewhere between Family Day and the parade, we might have one for widespread use. We'll see.
Yeah.
Fingers crossed.
Yeah, that would be great. I would love to do some kind of parade, you know, for the Christmas holiday, so we'll be looking at that, and like I said, once I firm up that date, we'll let Sherry and Donna know at that point. And that's all I have, but thank you for your time.
Thanks, Vaughn. Is there anyone else for public discussion? Remember to unmute yourself if you wish to speak.
I just had a quick question for Janice. The flu shots that we're doing on the 24th of September, is that only for seniors, or can anyone?
Anybody in the borough can come. It's 10 o'clock to 12 noon.
Got it.
I'm just trying to encourage the seniors to come because a lot of doctors want them to because of this other problem we have with COVID, and they thought it might help to give them more resistance. I mean, they're hoping.
Right, okay. I'll get it on the website.
Oh, great. Thank you, Donna.
You're welcome.
One more try for public discussion. Anyone else? Mr. Dykes? No, not this time? Giving us a break? Anyone from council have any further input?
Yeah, I just wanted to add that the Budget Committee will be meeting Monday.
Monday, what time?
This Monday coming up.
In person, in the council room?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
That's all.
All right. No one else for public discussion? No one else from council? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? All right. Meeting is adjourned. I'll see you all next week. Thank you.
Y'all have a good night.